Okay, I call to order the Board of Trustees special meeting for October 24th, 2023, and the time is now six o'clock PM. Mr. Hanson, would you like to do the invocation for us today? See it, you see back there?
Do I have any problem?
I'm sorry. Or should I ask Paige?
Thank you, Lord, for our time together. Please bless each family represented here. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Jeff just texted that he had a work emergency, but he just texted he should be here by 6:30.
Okay. Ms. McKee?
Here. I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion?
Yes, once again, I requested only a single agenda item be placed on here regarding safety for our residents and specifically their school child. It was for a bus turnaround at the end of the road. The engineer had specifically said we just had to approve the engineering request, and all I wanted was a five-minute discussion to say yes or no, to move forward, and that was not allowed. Putting the safety of our residents in jeopardy, I don't think is serving the community well. And although we can't add this to the meeting, because again, it's a special meeting, which we shouldn't have except in emergencies, this needs to be on the next agenda to discuss. Because again, it's about kids walking in the dark. They used to serve this road, but until the bus got stuck, they stopped. So we need to address this.
Go ahead. Yeah, you go ahead.
Mr. Evans, we didn't get any action from the engineer prior to the establishment of the agenda by Mrs. McKee. So there was not anything that was able to be put on the agenda at the time the agenda was established.
I sent this request on October 18th.
Yes, but we did not have the information from the engineer in order to put any kind of an item on the agenda by the time the agenda had been established.
The agenda wasn't released until, I think, 3:00 or later PM yesterday. So there was plenty of time when I requested on Wednesday this to be added to the agenda. So again, it, things need to be addressed, and especially public safety. So I look forward to having this on the next.
Yeah, and you know what? I'm hoping we'll have something from the county Friday. We don't put things on the agenda till we're ready to have all the information. And it went to the county, because you wrote an email to the county, and have you not heard back from them?
Yes, and you have that copy too, where they said we have to approve the engineering requests, and that's what I requested we do today.
We will have that on the next. We had to wait to hear back from them. Yes, we did. Yes, we did, Mr. Evans.
And you got that information well before the agenda was sent out.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to vote. The roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
And Mr. -- Ms. McKee?
Yes. So we'll move on to adopt the minutes for October 3rd, 2023 meeting as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, again, I don't believe these minutes properly reflect the business of the board. They're skewed, and that's all.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. So with that being said, that's a, we either can table it and just wait till the next meeting and approve it.
Yeah, the minutes are not.
It's tied.
So that's fine. That's fine, not a problem at all. Okay?
Do you want to bring it back up when Jeff gets here?
Yes, we can do that. We can move it.
Point of order is a special meeting. I don't think we can change the agenda.
Well, you're not changing the agenda.
The meeting, the minutes can't be approved.
Yeah, we just can't get it approved.
We'll have to either put them on the next meeting.
No, I'm talking about the public hearing that's stated to start at 6:05 PM. I don't think we can change the order.
And make a motion to recess until 6:30?
We can do that. We can recess till 6:30.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recess till 6:30?
What?
So that we can allow Mr. Johnson to be here for the public hearing?
Mr. Johnson to be here by 6:30. You can either wait, or you can leave. It's up to you guys.
So do you want to?
So.
I'm concerned we're going to jeopardize the public hearing.
Roll call.
Well, we don't have a second on the motion to adjourn. But we don't, we don't have Mr. Johnson here to provide input.
So we're going to adjourn, actually.
You're probably opening a meeting, and then by the time he gets here, you're going to be through all the stuff that he would have read. The LCPC, John's opinion.
Okay, so we can go ahead and move over to the public hearing for the application submitted by the zoning commission?
Twenty-five minutes, he should be here.
Okay. All right, let's do that then. I move to open a public hearing for the application submitted by the zoning commission for the text to the zoning resolution article, number two, definition in Article 10 supplementary district regulation, and the time is now 6:07. The legal notice for the Board of Trustees' public hearing was in the Potasqua Standard on October 12th, 2023. The application was submitted to the Licking County Planning Commission for non-biding recommendation on September 8th, 2023. The Planning Commission Board met on September 25th, 2023, and the Licking County Planning Commission Board voted to provide a non-biding recommendation of the conditional approval. The zoning commission recommend, recommendation to the Board of Trustees is to approve the application and was received on October 3rd, 2023. John Singleton, would you like to present?
Yes, the, uh. In the package you have from the staff report from LCPC, giving the non-biding recommendation of conditional approval, the conditions. No rush. Yeah. They recommended eliminating an additional sentence out of the line under research activities, which the zoning commission has amended before moving, making the recommendation to this board. They also recommended monitoring issue two in the November 7th election may have, may or may not have effects on one of the new sections in the zoning resolution pertaining to medical marijuana, which, that may nullify that section, or it may be something that remains as it is or may need to be amended at a later time. Then if you go on back in the report, everything that is in green in the same packet from the planning commission, what was submitted to them, green is new, and the red is what was deleted from those recommendations or those items as it was sent to the prosecutor's office for review and also to the planning commission for review. Under definitions, there's a new definition for decorative fence, because it was never defined in our zoning resolution, although Article 10 does refer to decorative fences and limitations. Festival, the definition for festivals placed in here for special, under the, basically under special events, which special events is also a new definition. Glare was rewritten based on different issues and written in accordance with the prosecutor's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation. Definition for small solar facility and small wind farm were also added. And then if you go on back to page 10-3, under 1005, under accessory structures, 1005F, the additional height, schools were added in here to eight feet on fences. They were limited to six feet. Every time they wanted to do any kind of a security fence and go to eight feet, they had to apply for a variance. So that was the reasoning behind that. Then if you go to 10-4, under table 1005B, under fence, where it says not permitted in front yard, it added decorative fences. They've always been allowed in the front yard up to within one foot of the property line or road right away, but there was never a definition. So now that's in, and then they also, we've also added in in, for schools, for security purposes. Solar panels were taken out on down. If you see where it says red, and they were moved down. And the solar panels we're talking about here is residential solar panels. So that was moved down and created its own separate section across. They're not permitted in the front yard. They have an increased setback from the side and rear property lines. And on this one, when you see the final draft over here that was submitted, this says six feet, but that was changed to eight feet by the zoning commission based on a conditional use permit we had and the actual height that they are once they are installed. If you go back to page 10-6, there are several items that are in red. All of these were deleted based on the opinion from the prosecutor's office and from the Licking County Planning Commission, as those all fall under the jurisdiction of other agencies. You go down to section 10-18. What was existing was deleted, but there is an entirely new section below it in green. This, this is the new section dealing with glare.
Oh, with glare, thanks.
Yes.
I missed that.
On 10-7, finishes up with the glare, and then there's four more sections that are deleted, because they fall under the jurisdiction of other agencies. Then when you go back to section 10-8, there's a new section at the bottom, and it says section 1029 in this, but when you go over to the updated version, all these are being, will be renumbered due to the sections that have been deleted. That section deals with mobile food vendors for special events, which brings them in and makes them a, an approved use for the schools, nonprofit organizations, schools, or government agencies. Schools or government agencies were added because we initially started with nonprofits, but technically under the law, schools and government agencies are not nonprofit. So we had to add them in also. And then if you go to 10-9, there's a section here under 1020. It's numbered currently on this section, 1030. Pursuant to the revised code 519.213, small solar facilities and small wind farms are prohibited in all zoning districts when the, within the unincorporated areas of the township. And small solar facilities and small wind farms, the definition of those are up in Article 2, which covers that. And then the last section that was added was a section that had been missed by the, in previous years. It needed to be added in in accordance with Resolution 1809, 1803, dealing with medical marijuana in Etna Township. That's the LCPC report. And then if you go over to this, which is in your packets, this is the clean copy after all the changes are made, if this is what you approve with. On page 10-1, at the bottom, you see Article 2 at the bottom. That is the sentence that was recommended from LCPC and the prosecutor's office to be removed from research activities. Because the provisions of sections 1016 and 1024 aren't even what was in the book now. That was from a previous version of the zoning resolution, and those just didn't exist. So those were based on the recommendations. That sentence was removed. The next page is the clean version of the definitions under solar facility, small solar facility, small wind farm, and special event. And if you have any questions, just stop me and ask while we're going. Then when you get to, go to page 10-5, if you go down to table 1005B, this is where the zoning commission had made the change from six feet to eight feet on the height for the residential solar panels, which is a single-site, single residential. This is for ground-mounted, roof-mounted are obviously still permitted use for residential purposes. They're considered an accessory structure. And the rest of this is all as, as I've just explained on the other, except that you'll notice that the section numbers are changed to represent how everything currently lines up if this is approved in the resolution. You go to sections 1011, 1012, and then 1013 is glare, 1016, live frontage, temporary dwellings, 1018. And then when you get down to licensed mobile food vendors other than 1029, it's 1022. 1023 is small solar facilities, small wind farms, and 1024 deals with medical marijuana. Any questions?
I do have a question on the section renumbering. Is that required? Because it could cause some confusion if people are used to section 1023 dealing with required frontage or noise on this. And typically, when sections are deleted in code or anything, they're just deleted, all others remain.
These were all renumbered based on the recommendation from both prosecutor and Licking County Planning.
Those will actually go in order once this is approved. So look at 13, 14.
And then I did have a question on the solar panels. Our fencing in residential areas, its maximum height is six foot. I would assume that's why the previous height was six foot for the solar panels, if you're going to block them or whatever. Is there any concern about raising to eight foot when the residential fencing is only six?
Well, there will be, as we move forward with the review of the zoning resolution, Article 16 deals with buffering, which at that point, we will need to add in some extra buffering around. Right now, if you look in the first column, solar panels are conditionally permitted use. So if somebody wants to do ground-mounted, single-site, solar panels, too many S's. It has to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that can be added on a case-by-case basis now until Article 16 is updated to address that issue. My recommendation, when we get to that point, is going to be add evergreen trees or whatever kind of bush that doesn't lose their leaves around them, especially on anything that's going to be visible to neighboring residential properties, streets, or cause a glare for anybody.
Should we do that in conjunction with this so that people can't install it without that proper buffering that you say we need?
Well, again, under conditionally permitted use, that can be added in, and it's, it will be recommended to the BZA. They worked on this, these two sections from March until now to get this much done, and then we're moving on into other parts of it now. But Article 16 does need work, and that does need to be addressed at that point.
Would the BZA have the authority now to require additional buffering?
Absolutely.
As it is?
Yes, under the conditionally permitted use.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that they're allowed to do that. And then the other question I had was on the mobile food truck vendors. I know I've talked to several, and there was concern about no provision for residential areas for special events, block parties, graduations, stuff like that. I know other, other townships do have those provisions. And was there any consideration given for that? Because I talked to a few members, and they said that wasn't discussed.
It wasn't discussed, but I'm, I believe HOAs are nonprofit organizations, areas like that, that would cover them in those areas. As far as a graduation party, something like that, I mean, that's just going to be something that, you know, they can have whatever kind of food they want to come in. But this is, this is dealing with just setting up to do business as far as this under special.
So you're saying for, any individual person can order a food truck for a graduation or anything?
It'd just be, basically their catering is what I would consider.
Okay, because there are some communities, towns, associations that invite food trucks in, so that, that would be fine with that?
And this is, again, when, when this is done, and this is up to this board at this point, you can approve this, deny it, or you can approve it with amendments. If it's something that you want to amend into this, you have the opportunity to do that at this point.
I'd be more apt to allow the food trucks, because during the pandemic, we saw how a lot of people, that helped neighborhoods. It brings people together. A lot of neighborhoods don't have HOAs, and Springfield Township has some, I think, some relevant, relevant provisions on, on food trucks, distances from houses and stuff like that that maybe we should look at. Because again, the vendors I'm speaking to, they, they're concerned that they're not going to be able to go into the residential areas for special events and that, if it's not a, you know, nonprofit or government or school, because that's, that is a lot of their, their business.
And that is something that, again, can be amended at this point? If that's something that you want to add to it?
What would the amendment look like, or what would you say?
You would just make the motion to add whatever to that and be approved by this board?
Can it be sent back to the commission for revision before it's approved?
No, at this point, they, they, at this point, the Board of Trustees votes to approve this recommendation from the zoning commission, deny this, or approve it with their amendments.
I know, thanks, thank you for that.
Now, does this do anything with the fee? Because right now, there's a $200 fee, permit fee for food trucks? Or is that separate?
There's been no fee set for this. So no, it would not fall under that. The $200 fee would, for a mobile food vendor, would be if they're operating in the areas that they are permitted to operate for profit, which are currently the general business M1, 2, and M2, and M1, M2, and M3 zone districts. They would be required permits to operate in those areas, and that would be the fee for those permits or the, yeah, for those permits as it's currently set up. But for special events, there is no fee that has been added to those unless this board decides to do that the next time they revise the fee schedule.
Okay, so this isn't, that's going to stay in place, and this is in addition to it?
Yes.
Because the way this reads, it says, "Mobile food vendors operating in Etna Township are only allowed to operate at special events or festivals." So I would think that would supersede based on that language, no?
Well, if you get to the last line that says exception, MFV is operating in GB or M1, M2, and M3s.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
So the ones that operate like at Amazon, they pull out, they still pay that fee?
They still have to have their permit, yes.
Only the M1s and M2s.
Yes.
And there's other departments. They have to have their health department.
Inspection, fire marshal.
What would be your recommendation as far as approving any kind of changes to it? Do it at this time? Would it be better to do it another time since we don't have really language? Or have the public hearing and then decide it at the, at the next meeting?
I mean, what, what you can do is, rather than, oh, actually, I don't think it has to be done during the public hearing. It could be during the discussion. So once the public hearing is closed, you have 20 days, or you recess public hearing to another meet, to another night, continue at that night, and we can get language worked up between now and then with prosecutor's office.
I'd like, after hearing what the public says, but definitely here, get the input from the food truck vendors, because they deal with these kind of situations that. And especially with, I think, if we're putting in changes for special events and festivals, I would think that would.
This would be the time to do it.
Require, it's going to be in a resident, possibly residential area. And if they're not nonprofit, not, you would need some other kind of allowance to have that, correct?
Yes.
Any more comments? Yeah, any more comments? The public, any public comments in regards to this type of amendment? Come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Gary Burkholder, 254 Trail East. I'm glad to see that we've incorporated some exclusion or prohibition relative to the community-sized solar. But I realize that the zoning cannot deal with the industrial solar, that that has to be done at the county commissioner level as far as exclusionary. So as I've stated in the past, I'm still very supportive of the Etna Township Board of Trustees passing a resolution requesting that the Etna Town, or that the county commissioners declare Etna Township as an exclusionary zone as it pertains to industrial-sized solar. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doris Casera Schumek, 9136 Mink Street, Etna. And I thought that now would be the perfect time to address this one resolution as well, which I've been advocating for the past five years with the Etna Township. And it's section 1015. So I see we have 10-5, 10-4, 10-7, 10-8, 10-9, 10-16, 10-18. 1015 is one that I've been, that I've brought up, as I mentioned, for over five years. And that is regarding noise. And the existing language for that is one that can be misinterpreted. So I had suggested changing the language. And since so many other of the resolutions in this section are being changed, deleted, I thought that this would be the perfect time to throw this out again, see if, if that can be done as well. The existing language for section 1015 noise says, "No objectionable noise that constitutes a nuisance that is audible due to volume, frequency, beat, and/or duration beyond the lot of the noise source shall be muffled or otherwise controlled. Weather sirens and related apparatuses used solely for public safety in addition to passing motor vehicles, utilizing public roadways, construction equipment, lawn equipment, agriculture equipment, and pets are exempt." So that's the way that it reads and that it's read for over five years. And the proposed language that I have, because our township is growing, becoming more dense, we have more people coming into our neighborhood, bad neighbors as well, creating a lot of noise, workers in warehouses and so forth, working at odd hours. So what I propose-- So what I propose, the change, is, "No objectionable noise that constitutes a nuisance that is audible due to volume, frequency, and/or duration to a reasonable person when heard beyond the lot of the noise source shall be permitted between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM unless muffled or otherwise controlled. Weather sirens and related warning devices used solely for public safety, construction equipment, lawn equipment, agriculture equipment, and pets are exempt. Temporary construction activity between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM." So I tried to keep it very basic. It was just my suggestion since for many years, over five years, I've been trying to work with the township. And to know though, has there been any consideration for a modification changing so that this can be interpreted clear to everybody who reads the resolution? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Perkins, 7352 Palmer Road. As someone who spends time in their non-professional field writing rules and enforcing certain rules, one of the things I discourage is producing rules that are unenforceable. So that's one general consideration that I encourage you to take into account is whenever you're writing zoning rules that, that they are actually enforceable. Otherwise, they have their teeth and you don't really get anywhere with them anyway. That being said, there's oftentimes when we can write rules that actually create problems rather than resolve them, where they can be resolved through other means that are on less, a lot less scale that, that allow the minority that are presenting a problem to be addressed rather than punishing the majority who are not in most situations. You know, there are things that, you know, in general life, I tend to follow the Jeffersonian model of that, that which governs least usually governs best. There are certainly some things where you do need to have rules in place. But my background in motorsports has taught me, you better be able to enforce them because if you can't enforce them, they're not worth the paper they're written on. And they, in fact, cause a lot, lot more problems than they cure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight on this?
Are we still on the agenda or no?
We're still on this.
We're on the public hearing for the zoning changes, not the general public comments. Is that what you?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine, it's no problem. Is there any other comments? Okay, so we can move on and see what the pleasure of the board is?
Do we have to close the public comments?
No, Mr. Evans, we don't. She's checking to see how close Jeff is to getting to the meeting.
We do have a call.
Once you want, once you get to the point where, where you're ready to close the public hearing, you can close it and then you discuss everything amongst yourselves. You can recess, well, even the discussion, we can, you can wait. You have 20 days from the date that you close the hearing.
Work out the language.
To do the final vote on this. So in that timeframe, when you're doing your discussion is when we can get the other language, if you want the other language and whatever added into it, whatever you would like to see, then we can do that and bring it back to the next.
And I do have another question. However, we can do that during discussion, I guess. So I would think that we would.
So we can go into a recess now if we wanted to? I don't know how far Jeff is or what's going on.
If you recess the hearing, recess until.
For that next.
Till the next meeting. Or you can close the hearing and go into discussion.
I think all we're dealing with is public comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, after your public comments, yes.
So you can then close the public hearing after the comments are made?
Mm-hmm.
Close the public hearing, but then recess it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, if you, if you close it, you don't, if you're going to recess the public hearing, you would open it back up to continue the public hearing at the continuation of the meeting.
Okay.
But your timeline for your final vote doesn't start until you close the public hearing for the 20 days.
Okay.
If you're going to submit something to the prosecutor's office, you're probably going to be better off to recess it because you might want to have discussion on what he says. But it's really up to you guys. Once you close the public hearing, you have no more public testimony on it. And that's what starts your timeframe, John's saying.
Right, the 20 days.
Correct.
But don't we have to close the public comments?
No, you, once you close the public hearing, you have to act on it.
You can just recess the hearing until the next, whatever date you set for the continuation of it.
I'm just confused because we have, we have a majority here. We proceeded with meetings when I'm not here.
This doesn't have, this doesn't have anything to do with Jeff. It's the procedure per Ohio Revised Code. Once you close the public hearing, you as a board have to act on it per Ohio Revised Code in 20 days.
Okay, within 20 days.
Within 20 days.
So since you want additional language proposed that we need to take to the prosecutor's office, there may need to be a longer window in order to do that rather than just the 20 days. So rather than end the hearing and take a recess, it's better to recess first so that it gives a longer window to give comment from the prosecutor's office for additional language that you're suggesting.
I understand all that. I'm just talking about public comments. Are we stopping votes and to move on?
Right.
To recess it or what?
That part doesn't have anything to do with the public comments. Once you close the public hearing, then you start the other timeframe on it.
Hey Jeff, how are you?
If you, if you just, if you recess it and you make changes, then you can open it back up to public comments at the next continuation on what changes that you made at that point. That's at your, that's at the board's pleasure.
Yeah.
So you can either close or recess. The difference is, is you start 20 days to when you have to make that final decision.
I move that we recess this to add the additional language and put it on now. Next meeting within that timeframe.
I will need a second. No, you just walked in, so I don't know.
Does he have to roll call to be officially here or?
For the record, he arrived at 6:39.
Hello, Mr. Johnson? Are you here?
Here. Sorry, we have power outage downtown, the mayor district, and I just stayed for our data center down there, so it's back up.
So we can continue to discuss it? I mean, Mark wants to bring you up to date of what we, what we're in the head of our hearing.
You have a motion that needs to be.
Get out a second first.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second it before discussion.
So the motion was to recess. We were talking about the mobile food truck vendors, how there's no provision to allow in residential areas outside of nonprofits and all that, graduations. There's the definition change for the special events, which could be held in the neighborhoods and if they wanted a food truck, as it's currently written, it would be prohibited. So I've talked to several food truck vendors, looked at other municipalities, other townships, and they do allow for residential with some qualifications. And I think that we should add that to the language. And Mr. Singleton indicated that we could recess, work on that language, bring it back next meeting, and then have a discussion and vote.
Yep. Oh, roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, it was just at 6:40 AM?
6:40 AM?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, would you like to stand up, be the first to speak at our public comments? Say your first and last name and your address for the record.
Eric Rigger. Address is 10460 Loop Road. I guess I'm just addressing concern, I know Mike brought it, or Mark brought it up earlier. I'm the resident that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get the bus to come back down my road.
Yeah, let me just stop you right there because I don't want us to be out of, right now, we don't have it on the agenda. And we explained to you why we didn't have it on there. We can't discuss it. We are in a special meeting right now.
Unless you want to discuss it not being on the agenda, because the agenda is a topic of the meeting.
No, that's not true. It's not, we're not, it's just, it's a special meeting today, sir. So that's the only reason why we're not saying we can't discuss it in the future of our next meeting. But right now, it can't be on this because we had already put our agenda together.
Okay, so I guess I just come back to the next meeting and bring it up?
Yes, we'll have it on there.
24th, okay.
We're not against it, but yeah, thank you.
It would've been nice to have it on this.
Judy Caffmeyer, 29 Roman Court. It would be most helpful, especially in a special session, to give a brief description of the proposed business items. For example, I have no idea what AMH easement Broyles 2 project means. And OPWC for Cumberland Crossing is another word salad needing a description. This is a public meeting and I assume that the purpose is to keep the public informed. A simple definition attached to the agenda item would be most helpful. Speaking of definitions, according to the 2023 Handbook for Ohio Sunshine Laws, a special meeting has three requirements, time, place, and purpose. I do not see a stated purpose for this particular meeting except for it being a regular meeting masquerading as a special meeting. The handbook even addresses this issue. It's, this information is found on page 127. When a special meeting is simply a rescheduled, regular meeting occurring at a different time, the statement of the meeting's purpose may be for general purposes. Discussing matters at a special meeting that were not disclosed in the notice of purpose, which we don't have one tonight, either in open session or executive session is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And I have extra copies if you would like one.
Steve Perkins, 7352 Palmer Road. Just wanted to bring up that the whole last topic could have been handled under a postponement to a time certain, under Robics rules, which is conveniently found in the index in the back. Thank you.
Gary Burkholder, 254 Trail East. Both as a candidate for Etna Township trustee and as a resident, I want to make some comments regarding the draft minutes which are on the agenda tonight. I do have to take exception, Trustee McKee, to the comments you made under trustee comments.
They weren't approved, Mr.
At the last.
These aren't approved.
It doesn't matter.
They are on the agenda.
They're draft minutes. They're draft minutes and they are on public record by law. They are on public record by law.
We didn't get them approved.
Doesn't matter if they're not approved.
We did not approve them.
Doesn't matter. They're on the agenda.
But it's just for the record, they have not been approved.
That's right, they're draft minutes. So maybe you want to correct what you said because what you said at that last meeting, you've accused me of misrepresenting myself as an employee of the township. I have not done that. You also made a statement that I work for Mark Evans.
Well, he told us that.
Would you let me finish?
That's what he told us.
Would you let me finish?
Point of order, man.
Would you let me finish?
If Mark can't finish, but I'm going to respond.
Well, give me my three minutes and then you can respond. So anyway, I do not work for Mark Evans. For the last two years, I have volunteered to help residents in this community. The only people I've worked for are the residents of this community. Now, I want to clarify something. I have worked with Mr. Evans. I've worked with our fiscal officer. I've worked with Laura Brown to get public records. I've worked with Nita Hanson. I've worked with Mr. Singleton when we have residents that have had questions here. I've worked with the county commissioners. I've worked with a variety of individuals to assist them as a volunteer. And I want that in the record so that it's very clear. But the question I have for you, Trustee McKee, and I've said it publicly, that I will work with you as a resident. And if I'm elected as a trustee, my question is, will you work with me as a resident? And that's the question I have for you. And then I'll, I'll be able to let you respond to that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I work with all residents. I don't treat anybody different. I work with all residents, including you. So like you mentioned, all the people you work with here, have you worked with me? Have you worked with me, Mr. Burkholder, as the president of this board? Have you, excuse me, I'm asking you the question, have you?
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah, please.
I'd be more than happy.
I would love to hear that. Would you work with me? And have you worked with me this last year and a half? That's a yes or no?
I've attempted to in many respects, but you won't respond to me.
I've never gotten anything from you, Mr.
I've tried, I've asked that things be on the.
Can you, no, no, not put stuff on the agenda. You've never worked with me. Of all the people here on this board, me, you've never worked with me.
Have you ever contacted me for help?
I have no reason to contact you.
Okay, thank you.
So did you have any reason to contact me?
Point of order.
Okay, so I'm going to make it clear about you. We got the email from Mr. Evans stating that he hired you as his unpaid consultant. It's not something I made up. It's a fact. There's an email to prove it. So that's why. Okay, that's why I made that clear and that's why the letter went out from our legal team stating, excuse me, excuse me, it didn't say volunteer, it just said unpaid consultant. And you have represented yourself at its different locations, saying that you were there on behalf of the township.
He is not. Point of order, this is public comments, this isn't trustee comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Evans, I'm talking. You listen to me right now.
This isn't public, this isn't trustee comments.
But he asked me to respond and I'm responding. And I'm being respectful and I need you to do the same thing. So yes, there is a letter that went out to us and we have the email to prove it, okay? So that's why that was said. Thank you. So if anybody wants the email, it's, it's public record. Is there any other public comments? So there you are. Is there any other public comments before we move on? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on over to our administrator, Ms. Nita Hanson, to do her report tonight.
Thank you. May I? Is that one of the?
Please, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees and good to have you all here. We're just one week away from our election. The polls will be open at 6:30 AM until 7:30 PM.
Excuse me.
Early in-person voting continues through Sunday.
You have to stop.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
You have to knock on the top of our administrator. She's speaking. You're very rude and you need to stop. Thank you. I just ask you to please, 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 please stop. Please stop. Go ahead, Mrs. Hanson, please.
Early in-person voting will continue through Sunday. Absentee voting by mail must be postmarked by Monday, November 6. But the polls for in-person voting on Tuesday will be open from 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. The Advocate will be gathering candidate questionnaires for the trustee candidates and the Southwest Looking School Board candidates. Those questionnaires should be published sometime this week. Those questionnaires should be published sometime this week. I brought to your attention a number of matters on behalf of our road crew. We need service on the mower mats to address the fact that two of the tires have worn more quickly than the other two. As I understand it, there's some kind of a way that the mower mats can move that is out of alignment, it's not, it's not functioning properly. We have a quote from ATMAPS for one thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars and I'm requesting approval for this expenditure. If there's a motion.
Yep.
I move to approve your special, what we need for the mower mats.
Thank you.
Do you have a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Are we proving the exact amount of fourteen seventy-one ninety-seven or do we need a little leeway in that?
No, I would, I think we should approve the amount of a quote.
When you have a quote, you get what the quote is. You don't ask the numbers. You go by the quote. That's why you get a quote.
But many times the additional items are bound during repairs.
Again, we go by the quote. Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
A light pole was damaged at Taylor and Palmer Roads. Jess Howard has supplied a quote for replacement in the amount of three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. We expect to receive reimbursement from the asphalt drivers insurance company. I'm requesting approval for this expenditure.
Make a motion to pay for that light replacement on Jess Howard, electric company, for the amount of three thousand six hundred forty-one dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion?
On these reimbursements, are we tracking them? Because I know there's been quite a few light poles hit. Are we being reimbursed for all of them?
Yeah, Bubba's taking care of tracking the payments and working with the insurance companies.
So have all the past ones been paid for?
I don't know the answer to that as I stand here. I can find that out. It's, I know it's something that Bubba tracks and takes care of.
Roll call, please, Miss Varyn.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
The traffic device controller at Taylor and Palmer needs to be replaced. That's the device that controls when the light switches to red, green, yellow. Jess Howard has supplied a quote for replacement in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars. Requesting approval. That is for both the part and the labor. I am requesting approval for this expenditure.
I'll make a motion for the proof for the Jess Howard traffic device controller for the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Is this, is this a failing part or is this just needs replaced because of the, it was damaged or was it just?
It just failed, it's the first time we've ever replaced it, so it's a period of runs and life.
Right, so it wasn't damaged in any way, it just failed.
No, it's inside the box.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call, Miss Varyn.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
There was some discussion at our last meeting about Venture Drive. You each have now received the notice of the filing of a petition to have the remainder of Venture Drive dedicated to the township. The site visit is scheduled for November ninth and the hearing is scheduled for November sixteenth. We don't need any action on that at this time. That's all I have?
Thank you.
I have comments on some stuff later in the agenda, but in terms of my report, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move over into the new business, the AMH easement Broyles two project. There's a gentleman here from there. But can we call him a speaker? Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Randy Robert, Director of Land Development for AMH Development. We, I have Broyles Farm, probably familiar with. We're in the process of getting engineering plans signed and John Singleton has those ready to sign. He requested an easement. We have, the main pond is here. Sheep flows to the south and we're requesting an easement on the twenty-acre park property that the township owns. I've got pictures, I could explain how it works. Essentially, it's, it's an overflow that is higher than the hundred-year flood. So the frequency that you'll see any water flowing over here is like maybe never. It's going to have concrete, it's called Fleximatt. It's basically kind of a softball-shaped concrete blobs that are incorporated in fabric. It's going to be, let's see, it's going to be forty feet wide and two hundred and ten feet from the top of the berm down. After nine months or so, vegetation starts going, starts to grow through it and so you really don't see it. So you start with the concrete and then you have that. It's got, it's going to have an eight-foot wide asphalt path on the top. It's going to have a little dip down about two feet and then, and that's the overflow. But what else can I explain? It's going to also have a fifteen-inch pipe that goes parallel with it. Here's the piece, fifteen-inch pipe here with large riprap at the bottom of it. So the whole flow from the pond forever is through the pipe. And if a second hundred-year flood happens days later after the first hundred-year flood, you might see some water spill over it. So that was requested all by the county and so that's what we're here to have you grant us.
Do you have copies of that, sir? If you can give us all the board?
I just want to clarify, I think that you stated that Mr. Singleton had requested the easement, but the plan proposed that this be built on our park property and so the only way for that to happen is for you to ask for an easement. I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. I kind of only have one copy there.
Yeah, she can do that. Thank you.
And this is the easement document. I don't know whether you've all read it, but it grants us permission on your property to do any maintenance that needs to be done on it and vice versa. If you feel like you need to do some emergency maintenance, you're, you're allowed to do the, even undermine what we built if you need to and then we'll have to put it back. So it's basically just a runoff, this concrete padding, it's erosion control, it's ODOT approved and it's kind of it.
I did have a question. Is there a reason that you're not just dealing with the water on your property? Because typically developments, that's what they do. If this was a adjacent commercial property, I don't see that being asked or granted. Is there a reason that you can't modify your retention or detention pond to accommodate this?
This all sheet flows onto the twenty acres and probably a hundred feet beyond the outlet or the slope bank comes down about a hundred feet is the, the main water course that goes east-west. And so that's where all this water sheet flows forever to there. And I believe we needed the twenty acres to the township and so there's, the outlet of water flowing has to go somewhere eventually to the lowest spot and that's the lowest spot. So there wasn't any other way to get to that creek if it's on the park property to go south.
You, you couldn't take finger, pipes, fingers and direct it into a retention pond in the center?
That's what they do. The whole, the whole development, it has stormed, stormed in the rear yards and in the roadways. They all go to that one pond and then from there it outlets in the fifteen-inch pipe to the creek.
I'm just wondering why the pond couldn't be modified to accept more water so that this isn't needed? To meet those occasional hundred-year floods or? I mean, is this, this is the only recourse or are there other options?
I believe it is. I mean, it's, it's, we had to go through the whole, you know, three or four county reviews, engineers. Somebody came up with all the calculations on how wide and how long it is. So yeah, this, I mean, the eventual outlet is, is the stream bed that's, you know, on the park land, so. But I, I think in the long run, you're not going to see anything there other than a spot of concrete riprap essentially at the end of a pipe. That pipe is buried until, so you just see the riprap and then this concrete matting will have vegetation growing up through it and you won't even see that. So essentially you're seeing a bunch of rock on the hillside.
Mr. Evans?
Does that make any sense?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I've been, I was just trying to wait for an opportunity. We've spoke with soil and water and the emergence, they will be required to have emergency spillway. It does not have to be on our property. It will require them to redesign their existing plan to put it on one of their other available lots. This is probably the perhaps easiest way for the emergency spillway to be designed, but it is not the only way for the emergency spillway to be designed.
Okay, and that's what I figured, that's my concern of if we're, we don't have a park design yet. We don't know how we're going to use this. There's a pond adjacent to this and we don't know how residents are going to use that. So my concern would be granting the easement when there are possibly other options and it doesn't sound like that was explored. It was, this is what was kind of moved forward of, hey, this is the easiest. But I'm a little hesitant with it being public land that it should be the easiest for the developer. I mean, we should make it hard for you, but if there is an opportunity that you can modify your plan, what is, is it just a cost issue or?
I never heard that that was a possibility, so I, I don't, I don't know that. It's never come up.
That's just what I'm told.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you also have the soil and water, there's the engineering department and et cetera. So they're only one agency out of like six that review all these plans. And I can tell you they've gone around and around with comments and re-engineering and so that's kind of where I think it's, it is personally.
It just, to me, it seems like this was the solution picked and every, all the engineering to affect that was done, which is needed, but I would have liked to see what are the other options, especially when you're asking for use of public land. And we've already granted one easement to, I think it was AEP. There's another development that has their water retention, the Drayton Hall on our property. I mean, I, I think we've got to be good stewards of our funds and lands. I mean, we did spend quite a bit of money on this land, so that would be my concern, especially if there's some confusion about if there's options or not. So I would like to see, is there options?
Right.
One other issue that I can address that might be a concern of yours and that is the, the long-term maintenance of, of all of the wastewater, not wastewater, but the stormwater, thank you. The stormwater management, including this emergency spillway, is that the long-term maintenance will be part of the county petition ditch program and the cost of that maintenance will be assessed as property tax. So the township is never going to have any kind of a maintenance cost associated with either this emergency spillway or certainly with any of their stormwater management. So I just point that out as an issue that might have been a concern.
So I, I guess if you look at the, this Broyles farm, the very first one, if you look at the layout, I, I don't, you know, it's this, let's see, the creek.
Which one? Which way you looking at here? Actually, this one right here?
Yeah, that one, you can see the layout and where the pond lays.
This one, right?
This particular one, yeah, has the, shows the outlet, the, you know, the stream bed. And so, I mean, it's, you're going to have a spillway, you know, even if you took all this cul-de-sac, you're still going to have a spillway that ends up going into the park. Because it's, it's got to get to the creek. So it's forever gone to the south, to the creek. And so that's kind of why it was engineered that way, I believe. I don't think it's a matter of like using up lots, but you still have to get to the creek. That makes any sense?
Am I correct that this, this land was not donated to the township? The township purchased this land?
Right.
I, I thought I was correct on that. I just...
The river flows this way, correct?
Yes.
It flows this way. So you're coming back against the creek.
That's north. Jeff, north is this way.
Well, it looks like that, but like what is that? You're coming out here with the, the creek's going that way, so you're coming back this way.
Jeff, here's a picture. This, that way. That's a little clearer. Just showing them an auditor's map. Because if you look at this map, Jeff, this map shows the portion of this, so that is north.
Yeah, I was looking at this end down here. Mike?
Thanks, Mark.
I was looking at why wouldn't it come, there's already a natural ditch here, why wouldn't it come into here? Like this spillway right here, and then it would flow like that.
Like, what I'm pointing at here is, is the natural flow is this direction, right? So why wouldn't you come out like this and flow this way, like that?
Because the pond, pond is here, it's, it's, this is an expansion of the existing pond.
Right.
And the, the water, you know, the lay of the land kind of got to this pond here.
Right.
It's all piped there and...
But you're running on all the water over here, right? Because you're talking about coming out here. I'm saying why don't you come out here and follow this right into the creek right here?
The reality is that we only have one, one, you know, it's a pipe coming out. The spillway again will never be used, unfortunately.
Well, cross our fingers, right?
Yeah. It's not like every week, you know, maybe likely never be used, but...
I would think you want to follow the natural fall on that though. It looks like this was, a ditch goes into the creek bed too.
I think this is a wet one's buffer, silt fence or something.
Well, I think that's a, is that what that is? I was thinking that was a, actually had this in here as a, as a flood area.
Then somebody marked this as, you know, protect this buffer from here from a certain distance and then this, they brought this buffer up.
I'd have to go look at it, that's all I could say. I'd have to go look at it to actually know.
Here's the flood plain that's going through. That's from the auditor's side of the flood plain. Would it make more sense to put a pipe into our pond and then some flow out of that or? It just seems to me we're blocking out a section.
Oh, I thought that was actually, I thought that was actually going to flow down.
There's some setting on there, they'll show the elevations, I'm not sure how to get it.
Right, but I'm looking at that, where the natural flow of the water going over the...
Water's going down.
Well, I'm saying he's trying to come this way. Well, I'm saying, he's trying to come this way, and the water's going that way, so why don't we get, go upstream or basically? That's what I'm trying to figure out, if I wouldn't get it downstream.
Well, they could just, they could straight, straight.
That's what I thought this was here, and I was thinking, oh, I, like I said, after that, of course.
Yeah, this is, but this is the water portion here.
Mr. Singleton, what's your view on having them just address it on their property? Have you seen anything about that or?
The, the answer when we spoke to Soil and Water today was if this were to be denied, then they would have to figure it out, re-engineer it to some other way.
I'm just concerned we're doing this for the convenience of the developer, which we should help development and not work against it. But when we're using our park property, I'm concerned.
I agree, if you don't have, I'd like to see where it is in that, I don't want to create, you know, see all the stuff we have in ours next time. Probably have ours, I could see that creating problems and seem like we're constantly fixing ours from floods that come through there.
Well, I think that there's going to be, I mean, I, I can't imagine that the park design will go in between, you know, that water into the creek.
Well, we got a pond to the wet, we have a pond right here. So you're talking about taking that area to the east of it, and our pond is constrained by your housing over here. So we're only left with really two sides for access, and that may take, that's, that's one of my concerns. Because we don't know how we're going to design this.
Yeah, we won't, we won't change the slope of that at all, but...
I'm just worried about if it's an open area for fit, you have a pipe, riprap, kids running, people, we're talking about this ball like that. I think we're at a preliminary stage with it. What kind of timeframe do you have? Probably as soon as possible, you want this.
The whole, the whole thing is mixed up a little bit, this whole development with the four million dollar lift station that's being constructed. That, and they're also dying to leave the three ten sewer over here. If we could get these plans signed, start the sewer, that puts us on time, if not, we're talking about probably, you know, nine months to a year. Redesigning all that, the layout going in with the final development plan.
Does the sewer have anything to do with the drainage, though?
No, but it's the plan. So we, we can't, we can't start the, any development work, can't turn any dirt unless the plan gets signed.
Well, the lift station...
This, this development's in two phases. This is phase two. They haven't begun phase one yet.
Right. And phase one is really the phase that is around the area where the lift station is. This is phase two.
So this one, real whole...
Phase one hasn't even started yet.
The way I'm looking at it, it's, it's ready to be paved, there's curbs in place.
But you haven't, what I'm saying is you've made some reference to the lift station as regards to this phase, and the lift station is part of phase one. This is phase two.
Yeah, so what we have is, we're probably seventy-five percent done with the lift station. Sewer is down to, this probably line right here, so the sewer right now is here. Right or wrong, I've told a whole lot of people that I could get the sewer to that stub over here.
Because they want to go...
Yeah, because they want to run it all the way down here.
Right, to shoot to...
So, I mean, you're talking a whole lot, a whole lot unhappy people. This case has to get redesigned for that still.
Do, on, on a separate thing, lift station, do you know when that is going to be open? I know it's delayed.
If you're talking about the roadway, I think we're still, we should...
Is it December?
Yeah, mid-December, but I think the widening part will happen next year, but yeah.
I was just curious. I, I'm just concerned that it's easy for the developer when there might be another option that they handle it on their property.
Well, that's not so easy, because that's a lot of money right there. I mean, it could go somewhere else, but, I mean, I sure wish somebody had thought about it earlier than... But we're, we're talking about pushing this thing like...
I just learned about this Wednesday.
Okay.
So I apologize. I wish I knew, because I would have brought those concerns up much earlier. And that's why I, I would ask that the full board be updated on these kind of things in the future as they occur.
So the vegetation from the, I just don't think you can see right on the pile of rocks. On the other side, you'll see a pile of rocks, but so...
So it's kind of, is it depressed? Is it sunken?
Yeah, it's, it kind of looks like...
It's kind of a channel?
Yes, exactly. Looks like that. It's, this is a little...
So you're talking about a foot depression? So it's not even returned to flat land, so you've got...
They like a little...
Well, I'm, I'm sure there'll be lots of weeds and stuff grow up on it.
I'm just saying, if, if your kids are running, like whatever use for heaven, if it was returned where, you, you can't do underground tanks, you can't do... I know the cost, but...
Yeah, the water has to go somewhere, and that's, that creek is the only place we get to it. Again, with this, this is, you're just going to see vegetation, go grass growing. If a kid runs across that thing, it's going to be on a, on a mile slope, and he more than just knows there.
So what are you calling it, anything you said stuff with her through it? Yeah, it's just something to maintain, or is it just, I mean?
I don't think you even have to mow it. This, this thing, that's probably been in place probably nine to twelve months.
Where's this at?
That is in the, in the place called Estates at Lake Forest. It's on Repala, Repala Drive. It's in our, in our new development in there. It's called Estates at Lake Forest. You come up north on Refugee Road. You are west of North High School. It's a Sycamore Church. That area, go up that road, I can't even remember the name of it, but it eventually turns on Repala Drive.
And so Repala Drive is up here, and this is behind?
Yeah. Of all the ways, you, you see, if you come up north, you see our entrance monument on the left.
Over there, okay.
Uh, there's a little bridge with a railing here, and then, and there's blocks here. This thing is behind probably the first five blocks, and it goes, and then there's another pond also that has the same stuff. But this is the one that's the actual...
I can't see how, doesn't need to be maintained, mowed, something, because it's going to be left to grow. You're going to have weeds, you're going to have...
Well, the hillside right now is highly vegetated, you know, it's got, it's all vegetation. And I think that's the way you want, just the natural look.
Mr. Evans, just to address your timing issue. So a couple of weeks ago, when it became evident that the requirement was going to be for an easement that AMH was going to ask for, they proposed through their legal counsel language for the easement that I began working with the prosecutor's office. That became a negotiation back and forth as to the actual language of the easement to where it was in a form that would be legally acceptable, should the board determine whether or not to grant the easement. It was at that time that I gave it to you and said, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm giving you this proposal that has been given to us by AMH that is now legally acceptable and a form that is legally acceptable for you to sign.
So it's not a lot of space between those blocks, you can see from that other one.
I know what you're talking about. I've seen them before, and that, yeah, I just don't know if it's appropriate for a park. Because that land behind here, this is just open land, right? It's not really a park. It's not really used back here, is it?
It's, you know, it all slopes down to that creek, and I, I don't know whether anybody's going to want to try to cross the creek and just use that little sliver between the top of this pond and the creek. It's, you can use it, I mean, so...
Has that land been farmed, been harvested in that? Is it open?
No, no, I think it's all weeds and stuff, yeah.
But to get to it, because that farm right in front of it, it's pretty thick, right?
It's pretty thin, I remember. I'd still like to walk in and look at it personally.
All right, all right.
Because you can go right, you can go right here and get back to it. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I think I'd like to move to postpone this until later date to give it some time to research and look at options, and maybe talk, have the hands and talk with the developer about possible other options. Instead of using our, our land, but if it's needed.
So what kind of timeframe are you thinking?
You have a motion on the oral, unless you can reschedule.
Make a motion?
I move to postpone.
Postpone.
Roll call, Ms. Mary?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Could I get your contact information before you leave? If you have any questions? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Resolution twenty-three, ten, twenty-four, zero, one. Authorized myself, Rosalind McKee, to prepare a and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute the contract as required and fiscal officer Julie Grant, Julie Varian, to sign the chief fiscal officer's certificate, certification, sorry, of a local fund loan repayment of one hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, please?
I do have a question. We, we had the prior in two thousand twenty-one OPWC that wasn't pursued dealing with Etna Proper. And I know last year when we were talking about, or I think it was, yeah, it was last year, during the OPWC, it was the comment on the board to, we, we don't want to do it. We want to add more things together. It seems like we have less now. Is there a reason why Etna Proper, which was going to be moved forward two years ago, isn't a part of this? And then my other question is, the prior policy of the board was that the amounts that were going to be requested be stated before any authorization or approval be given. This seems like a, a change from that. Is there a reason for that? Why, why the full, full information wasn't provided to the board?
Ms. McKee?
Yes, please.
So I think if you recall, a couple of months ago, when we were first talking about getting approval for the engineer to give us the information that we needed for OPWC, we addressed Etna Proper.
Yep.
And we talked at that time about with the Pike Street project that'll be ongoing, that had Etna Proper done, once the Pike Street project is completed, it makes more sense. And at that time, the discussion was to submit an OPWC request for, for these, this particular neighborhood. The, we have the engineer's estimate. The amount that is in the resolution is designed to be a twenty-six percent contribution by the township based on the hundred percent number that the engineer gave us, because a twenty-six seventy-four request gives us more points. So that hopefully this will be a more acceptable application.
You state that as in the resolution. Can you point to what section or where that twenty-six percent is?
I, I don't know that the figure twenty-six percent is included in the resolution.
It's not.
The amount of money is included in the resolution.
Which is the one hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and forty-eighty-four dollars.
Whereas I don't think it has the resolution.
Where, there's...
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see. I apologize, Mr. Evans. It's not on the resolution itself. It's on the fiscal officer's certification of the availability of funds, which is also in the packet.
Okay, that didn't state any percentage or anything.
Get ready for a roll call. Ms. Mary?
You're done with discussion? And again, I just think that the amount requested is low compared to other projects. We could have probably added other areas to this.
Okay.
Any discussion, Ms. Johnson?
No.
Roll call, Ms. Mary?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to post the Etna Community Park survey questions on the township website. Send to the ListServe and request Wind Waste to include in the next bill, which we know their bill only runs in December, so they would do it separately.
Well, she had, she called it, so you might want to discuss and then make your motion.
So let's, yeah, let's...
Do you want to discuss it before you make your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so in, in terms of, so the thought process behind asking Wind Waste to mail this for the township is, number one, it is a public service that they've offered to the township. And number two, it would give us a method to communicate with a, another part of our residential population that perhaps is not connected with us, either electronically through our List Serve or watching our website. So it would, the thought process was it would give us a whole nother group. In talking with Wind Waste about specifically having it mailed with the bill, the next billing cycle is not, will not be mailed until the end of November. But Wind Waste may, is, is considering just making a special mailing for us at no cost to the township. I don't have their answer back yet on that, but they, they seemed that they would be open to that. So you might want to just alter your motion to say in a separate mailing from Wind Waste, which they would do without cost.
Without charge.
Yeah, without cost to the township.
And I just wanted to clarify that the, the mailings, the two mailings a year are part of their contract.
Correct.
So that is part, and the only thing I would ask is that this not be used for any promotion, no trustees' names on it, because it's been abused previously.
You were given the three pages.
I don't...
Yep, that's it.
The survey was developed in cooperation with our engineer and the park committee.
Was, this wasn't emailed previously, was it? Is this for some I've seen? I know typically their mailings are two-page, aren't they? Is there a problem with it being three-page?
Well, this would...
Or you're just directing them to it?
I'm sorry?
You're just directing them to this? You're not including this in the mailing, are you?
No, this will be included in the mailing. So this is two pages.
Does it say how to return it?
It's far in the back.
Does it say how to return it or where to return it?
It doesn't say anything.
Well, that's a point, well, maybe we should, for the ones that are...
A return to...
Oh, no, please, if you, if, please fill out and return to Etna Township. It doesn't have like by a date certain, so maybe that would be an excellent thing to do.
And if they're going to mail it, shouldn't they have our P O box on there?
Sure.
Isn't that the proper way for it to receive mail?
That's where it should go, to our P O box.
Yep.
Yep.
That's absolutely right.
That's why I asked that these be provided prior, so we can review them.
Um, these just came out when? When did we get these? Today, yesterday?
Maybe, yeah. It's, we haven't had them very long, for sure. We just would like to get them out to the township residents to give them as great a voice as possible in the design of our park facility.
So you got to just...
And I think the park committee had talked about having a return date by December thirty-first.
First of the year.
So, I mean, obviously, if we get in one on, you know, three, four days after our cut, cutoff, it's not going to, you know, end the world, because it's, the whole purpose is to get as much resident input into the park design as possible.
And it can be, I mean, we can go in here, make some changes. It's not, it's not installed.
No, that's for sure.
I mean, we can go in here and put the P O box on there, so it's not a problem at all. I don't know how big is our P O box, sorry. Was it a, was it a smaller one or just the normal size?
It'll be fine. It'll be fine. If they get bags of mail for us, they'll be so happy.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they'll have it ready for us, in a, in a basket.
That's right. They'll be happy.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy fix.
And then, of course, we talked about sending it out to our List Serve and having it available on the website and having paper copies here available at Town Hall for people that could stop in. So the, the whole goal is to get input from as many people in our township as we can.
And I would suggest making that a PDF fillable form, so they can just email it back and we'll have it, instead of having them mail it.
We need to discuss that, because that's a different, that's a different...
I don't know, I guess I'll have to look at the format of it, about whether it's fillable or not. fillable or not.
No, it's not.
You can make any, you can make any form fillable.
Right, that's true. But my question would be is, if we do it as a PDF, it needs to be mailed back to?
No, I'm sorry. What, have them email it to?
That's what I'm saying. We need to make that clear, too. That would need to be additional information that we need to put on this form.
But this is just for the mailing. You could put on the township website the fillable one. And they could print it and mail it or fill it out and email it.
That's all we care about.
Yeah, right. We can figure out the details.
Yep, that's right.
I'm trying to make it easier for the residents.
So Julie, you want to do a roll call now?
We have to, but you stopped your motion.
Oh, I did?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I interrupted. I interrupted the process.
Okay, so what did we change?
That it's not with the bill and just.
The billings, we have to.
Just cut it off that we made, they made a mailing for it.
Okay. So that's what we'll change, the billing. We would not be, we would not use our free billing or just the two.
If available, Wind Waste will send it out.
Okay. When available, Wind Waste will send it out on, on our behalf of the township.
Right. Okay.
Roll call Ms. Barry?
You need to state, you need to state, restate your motion till you need to send it.
Okay. I move to post the Etna Township Park Survey on the township website and to send the listserv and request Wind Waste include the next, if they can, and these, of their mailing to be included, if available, on our behalf of the township. Is there a second?
Second.
We are into discussion. Roll call Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
So we'll get more detail on that. I move to authorize myself to sign the Grolikin County Assessment and Assumption Agreement for transfer, for a transfer of ownership of, of the property located at eighty-nine forty Global Way from Exeter Partial Five Etna Land LLC to the Development Property O H L L C as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Is there any ramification to the township, or is this?
This, no, this is simply an assignment because there's been a change of ownership.
Julie, Ms. Barry, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve the Ohio Public Employee, O P, O P E C Dental and Life Program Renews for January first, twenty twenty-four as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
So it's only three percent? Is it three percent each year, or is that?
No, so one time three percent.
One time three percent.
Twenty twenty-seven, it locks in, and that's about a dollar fifty per person.
It's, but it specifically states that it's a two-year rate guarantee until twenty twenty-six.
And zero percent on the life, three-year guarantee. All right.
Roll call Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
So over into the old business.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, President McKee. The, the board may recall that you previously approved the purchase of two movable radar speed signs from a company called Elon City. The prosecutor's office had issues with a number of the terms and conditions in Elon's contract that Elon was not willing to renew. We went through a negotiation process with them. So through Sourcewell, I located All Traffic Solutions. They offer a similar product, and their product is being used in Reynoldsburg. I met with Reynoldsburg's road superintendent and two of its police officers that moved their equipment from place to place. I saw the equipment and the online reports that are available, which I thought that was interesting, that the Elon City, you would have, I would have had to take a laptop to the location and have it connect via, via Bluetooth in order to download the data. And for these, it's all cloud-based. And so reports are available through the cloud, and the history and all of the data is collected and maintained, including like when a particular road was, or location was, you can schedule, okay, if a resident calls and says, you know, could you put my road on for radar speed, then you can just create a list. You can say, yep, I've got you on the list, you're number seven, or whatever. So I liked the way that it was set up. There are no legal issues with the All Traffic Solution terms. So I'm requesting approval of the purchase of the radar signs from All Traffic in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. This is slightly more than the previous approval for the Elon City equipment, which was six thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars.
In this one, you would do a report to the board, monthly, quarterly, whatever?
Yeah, it might, it makes, well, I guess I will obviously make a report at the pleasure of the board.
Oh.
From the, from a data collection standpoint, I don't know if it makes sense to make a monthly report, or if it's quarterly report, but the reports can be provided to our deputies for them to, like, increase their presences certain time of the day.
That's great.
Now, I do have a question. You said it has a cloud base. Is there fees associated with that?
It's all included in the cost that is provided. And in fact, I think that's one reason it's a little bit more expensive, because in comparing the Elon City invoice that we had, there was not a charge for the, for the, what I would call the software.
The reason I ask is because in the description on the first one, it says can be upgraded to traffic cloud.
Yep.
So it is upgraded to traffic cloud?
It is, at that price. Yep. It's already included.
Does it, where does it say that in the quote?
Well, whoops. Let me see.
And then what, what kind of unit is this? Is this one that mounts on a pole or traffic pole?
Same one Reynoldsburg uses, right?
Yeah. Well, Reynoldsburg also has one that is mounted on a, on a cart.
Yeah.
But these are specifically the ones that are pole-mounted.
Because the only thing I see on here about that is traffic data collection stores vehicle statistics locally for later analysis. I don't see anything about upgrading to traffic cloud or anything like that.
Just one second. Maybe I might have to, I apologize that it's not here in my folder, but it was, just take me a second.
Isn't that how you read it?
My experience, these reported things, they usually have a cell phone attached to them, and they transmit through the cell phone the data.
That's the cloud.
So there's, so they usually have a fee every year for this cell phone.
But that's what it says, can be upgraded. I don't see where it says upgraded.
Well, traffic data collection.
Local, locally, not in the cloud. I would, I would assume it would say upgraded traffic cloud so much, or quantity too.
Yeah. They can be considerable, too. I know it's, it's a little matter here to have that option on it.
Just one second, please. I don't have.
These would not be left out very long, would they?
In place, you mean?
Well, I mean, we would put it out there permanently on a site that we have to go on.
Moving around.
Right, so we'd move it around so people could collect it at that time.
Violet Township does it quite a bit. They'll, they'll put it in one spot, and I think Bubba could pound a pole in, mount it, move it.
Right, and then you could take that point.
I don't think they'll move it too much.
They move on a trailer, too, in the neighborhoods.
I like the poles, because they're not as unsightly as the trailers, and probably less dangerous if people hit them or. But yeah, that, that'd be my only question, to make sure that this is actually what we're paying for, that it includes that cloud, because I do think that would be a feature instead of having somebody go out there because the expense of the employee to go out there and download it, and it would add up.
How much that thing weigh?
Bubba, have you seen the installation of those? Is it heavy? Is it awkward?
Well, just a single pole, you can just, you know, just drive to the ground.
And then you attach the?
Well, basically, like, down here between Columbia and the solar panel lights, it's basically.
Yeah, just like that.
Oh, it's got the panel battery.
Yeah, it's all, it's all enclosed. But I can get concrete bases, you know, like, if you see a progress or something, and we partner lots of this. I mean, you won't move them. So if you get a couple of people out there, you can, you can move it.
I just worry about the bases. You'd have to really level ground, otherwise it's going to.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we get the telephone pole?
I mean, can, can we proceed with the approval conditional that includes traffic cloud? And if not, bring it back to the board?
So I'm just printing this for you right now. It has a specific line item for the traffic data collection, stores vehicles, statistics locally for later analysis. I just didn't have it in my folder.
But is that local, or usually the cloud is referred to as not local?
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought I had, I thought I had passed.
Did I have that?
Oh, you have it, too. Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, that I don't think the local, stored locally means stored there, not in the cloud. In the unit. And that's where it says can be upgraded to traffic cloud.
I, I can clarify that. I know that when I was speaking with the sales associate, she, I asked her specifically if there was a local agency that was using the same unit, and she referred me to Reynoldsburg. And I went out to Reynoldsburg, and I saw how they use it, and the safety director or road superintendent showed me the reports that he can access and print. So based on that, I assumed that what they told me was the same equipment is available in Reynoldsburg, but I can certainly verify that.
Because online, they're talking about a plan.
I'm sorry?
Online, they're talking about a plan, which I would think you would.
Can we add a plan there?
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, approve it, and then, I just don't know, if the iCloud is extremely expensive, maybe there's another option that.
Yep, correct.
So I'm not sure if we want to purchase it, and then, okay, add it if it's really expensive.
Well, certainly, we're not going to purchase that until we clarify that question.
Because as Mr. Johnson indicated, sometimes those iCloud fees can be significant.
Theirs are eight hundred dollars.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if you're, and if you, two of them. So.
It's the pleasure of the board on this, then.
Do we have a motion on the, I would move to amend the motion to.
There was never a motion.
Oh, there no, okay. So I'd, I'd move to approve the purchase of the All Traffic Solutions as presented for seventy-three ninety-three fifty-nine, condition that it contains and includes the traffic cloud data transmission with no additional fees.
I'll second.
Roll call Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
The Global Way, six twenty-nine, something like that.
Thank you, President McKee. When we last spoke about the Global Wave six twenty-nine grant reimbursement, Mr. Evans had the good idea of seeking reimbursement of our legal fees since the project came in under budget and there were additional funds available. Our outside legal counsel agrees that it may be possible to have fees for professional services reimbursed. Since that time, Ms. Marion and I have been working together to gather all of the legal invoices, redact all entries that are not related to six twenty-nine, and gather proof of payment. I provided you with the redacted invoices as well as a draft letter submitting these expenses for reimbursement. I'm requesting approval to submit this supplemental application. I want you to please note that the six twenty-nine reimburses twenty-five percent of the costs incurred. So in this case, that would be seven thousand, nine dollars and seventy-five cents of the total fees incurred, twenty-eight thousand, thirty-nine dollars. As best I know, there are no other fees or expenses that can be submitted, and the remainder of the funds will revert back to the state.
Is there a second? Well, I'm sorry, I move to approve the supplement application for reimbursement for the Global Way six twenty-nine grant for the professional services in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-five cents.
That, that amount's not correct.
No, seven thousand.
Seven thousand nine, seven thousand, nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Sorry, thanks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We need a discussion?
I'd just say, I mean, if we, if we get this, this will pay for almost all of the traffic.
Yep.
Control.
All right. Roll call Ms. Barry?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm moving on over to the fiscal officer report. I move Resolution twenty-three ten, twenty-four oh-two, to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So it looks like you, you added later on this afternoon, the.
Actually, this is the purchase orders right now.
I'm sorry?
This is the purchase orders right now.
Right, right.
There wasn't anything added.
Okay.
But do you need a second?
I second.
Roll call?
This one, wait for roll call. Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I'll have moved to ratify the payment for the bills as shown on payment listing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please?
What, do we?
I'm sorry, discussion?
And Julie, you said the Brochus and Griggs was removed from here?
Yep.
It was. There were C I C charters that Nita caught.
That's what I was reporting.
That we, so we took both the bills that were on there for Brochus off. And I'll pay those bills minus the C I C next time, and Nita will pay the C I C fees.
Okay, that's exactly what we needed.
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Announcements and comments from the trustees?
I'd just like to say again that I think that these agendas should be released earlier than the day before, to give people and trustees, because I don't know what's on this agenda until the public sees it. So I would request that this be done at least five days prior with the cooperation of the full board.
Mr. Johnson?
Once again, I, I'm not running for reelection, as many know. I think our staff has done an excellent job in supporting what we do here.
Thought we had to keep to the agenda.
We did.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call, the German?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.